Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council's regular meeting for Wednesday, April 26, 2005. We are here in room 340 of City Hall, the John F. R. O. Council Chambers, where we meet each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, usually at 10:00 a.m. We invite members of the public to come down here for general public comment on items that are not agendized but are under our jurisdiction, or to comment on items that have been posted for public comment. And you can get the agendas for our city council meetings through our city's website at www.lacity.org. We also invite folks to testify and give public testimony through our Van Nuys City Hall. If that's closer to where you live, you can go over to Van Nuys City Hall and via remote facilities testify for general public comment, or on any of the items that have been agendized for public comment as well. You can also, if you are not close to a television where we are being broadcast right now live on Channel 35 and taped to be replayed in the evening, you can also access through our city's homepage, which is again www.lacity.org, a webcast of our council meetings, where live streaming video. And you can also call council phone, which is (213) 621-CITY. You can call to listen to the proceedings of the city council, or any of the council committee meetings that we have as well. We need ten members, or two-thirds, to constitute a quorum of this body to begin our meeting. I want to thank the council members who are here in a timely fashion. That's council members Labonge, council member Parks, council member Perry, council member Smith, myself, council member Garcetti. We are still awaiting five more council members. And I'd like to ask council member Hahn, council member Weezer, council member Rosendahl, council member Reyes, council member Weiss, and council member Wesson, to please make their way down to council chambers as quickly as possible. We are now past the 10 o'clock hour, when by our own council rules, we should be in our seats and beginning the meeting. So please come down as quickly as possible. As soon as we have ten members, we will begin. Thank you very much. And I want to thank council members Labonge, and Parks, Perry, and Smith for being here in a timely fashion. We do have a committee that includes Mr. Weiss, Mr. Rosendahl, and Ms. Hahn meeting upstairs. But we do need to bring those members down, so if I can ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to inquire about the meeting time for that committee. And would like to ask the other council members, not a part of that committee, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Reyes, to please make their way down as quickly as possible to council chambers. It's now about 10:05. Five minutes passed when we should be beginning. If we can't constitute a quorum in another five minutes, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you again to council members Labonge, Parks, Perry, Smith for being here. I know we have a committee, possibly two that are meeting right now, but we need to wrap those up in order to continue with the business of the day. And like to again ask council members Hahn, Weezer, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Wesson to please make their way down as quickly as possible. Thank you. It is now about ten minutes after the hour. Councilmember Labonge, Parks, Perry, Smith, and Wesson are here. We will make one more inquiry upstairs to see if those meetings are going to wrap up anytime soon, and if not, we'll adjourn this meeting. And welcome to Los Angeles City Council. It is almost a quarter after the hour. We do have one committee still in session, which includes Mr. Weiss, Mr. Rosendahl, and Ms. Hahn, but we are still awaiting Mr. Weezer and Mr. Reyes to come to council. So we need them to come down right now, or we will adjourn the meeting. It is now 10:20. Thank you to council members Labonge, Parks, Perry, thank you, Mr. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Wesson. We still have just eight members here. And due to a lack of quorum, we're now twenty minutes past the hour. Ms. Perry, I know you have a group... Ms. Perry? I know you have a group of veterans that are here. We're going to adjourn the meeting, but if you would like to make an introduction of the veterans that are here. Okay, colleagues, just update folks. We do have one-time sensitive matter. We would have adjourned otherwise right now. We have two members that are upstairs. We're going to try to get one of those two to constitute ten members and a quorum. If we can't do that in the next couple of minutes, we will adjourn. Thank you again, colleagues. I want to thank council members Labonge and Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson for being here. We are at nine members, and it is about 25 after the hour. We are waiting one more member. And council member Weezer, council member Hahn, we are asking to join us as soon as possible. Ms. Hahn is upstairs, still chairing, I know, the meeting, but we're hoping to hold that committee meeting in advance, so we can conduct this meeting. So that is the latest update. We're at nine members. Are there any announcements, colleagues, that we want to take this time to give that we usually do at the end of the meeting? Any announcements about things either in your districts, or in general? Yes, Mr. Labonge?
Tremendous rainfall that we have had. The mustard is absolutely beautiful in Griffith Park. And I ask all of you who are joining us today, whether it's Griffith Park, or any other park in the city, to find your way to take a hike, take a walk. Because of the rains, it's really sprouted some beautiful flowers at this time of year. So I want to encourage everyone to walk. And I could just do an instant poll right now. For those, how many do physical activity every day and walk somewhere in their neighborhood, in their block? It's good to do. It's walk. It's important. Captain Smith, good to see you raise your hand there. It's important to walk. So encourage everybody to get out there and do that. Thank you, Mr. President. Enjoy the spring flowers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Everybody else have announcements? Mr. Reyes, I think we have a special visitor with us, Mr. Reyes. Would you like to take this opportunity to introduce the guest that we have, Mr. Reyes?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this morning, we have with us a very important person in literature when it comes to celebrating Los Angeles. His name is Luis J. Rodriguez, a writer, and I'm not sure if it's okay to call him an activist, but perhaps he can say yes. But he's written many great books. Several are regarding the way of life in Los Angeles, how we deal with survival, how we overcome challenges. One of his best sellers is Always Running, La Vida Loca, gang days in L.A., written to essentially save his eldest son from gang life. So it talks about the realities of these kinds of pressures. Incredible accomplishment, a hero from the east side. He's been recognized by his holiness, the Dalai Lama, for the unsung hero of compassion, Alila Wallace's Reader's Digest Writers Award, a Latin Fellowship for Poetry, Hispanic Heritage Award for Literature, and Illinois Author of the Year Award. He's also written poetry on the Alley River, and talks about its element as a life source for many of us who grew up in neighborhoods that were parked poor, and this became a source of relief, a source of recreation. But I'd like to ask Mr. Rodriguez, would you share a few words with us?
Thank you. Real briefly, I just want to say how honored I am to be honored this way. I grew up in Los Angeles. I spent fifteen years in Chicago, and I came back. And I'm really glad to be back. And I want to mention that me and my wife, we've opened up a bookstore café in Silmar, in the northeast San Fernando Valley, called Tia Chucha's Café Cultural. So please, if you can, come and visit this beautiful, wonderful space that we created for the whole community. Gracias. Thank you very much.
I just also want to recognize Trini for joining us this morning. Thank you, Trulie Stand. Let's recognize her. Alongside every great man is a great woman, so thank you so much, Trini. And again, thank you, Council President, for allowing us to introduce Mr. Rodriguez, such an important person in the literature world. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements, colleagues? Okay. Yes, Ms. Perry?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to recognize some very special friends and some treasures, not only of Los Angeles, but our entire country, representatives here from the Angeles, but our entire country, representatives here from the Go for Broke Foundation, members of the 442nd Battalion, here today on Item One, Special One, as they move forward on their plans to build an educational center for generations past and all future generations to educate them on issues like tolerance and patriotism and love of one's country. And I'm very pleased that they're here today, and I look forward to having a quorum because they're here for a time. We have a quorum now?
Yep.
Okay, we have a quorum now.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinatus Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zain, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum. Ms. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wesson moves and Mr. Weiss seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes are approved unanimously. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves and Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objection, that too is unanimously approved.
Ms. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, we'll take general public comment right now on items that are not agendized but that are under the purview of our jurisdiction. I'd like to invite forward Soche Lujan to be our first speaker, Maria Avina, Elisa Avina, Jose Nicolas, Francisco Torres, and we will go from there.
Good morning, City Council members. This weekend, there were many Earth Day celebrations taking place throughout the Southland. On Friday, many councilmembers spoke in regards to the importance of creating and maintaining green space throughout every district in Los Angeles. City Council members, you have an incredibly unique and honorable opportunity to help preserve 14 beautiful acres of green space, which is known as the South Central Farm. The farmers and their supporters have been doing all they can to educate people about the importance of maintaining this green space for the community. City Council, your assistance to this noteworthy cause is imperative. It is well within your means to save the farm. This is your chance at redemption. But more importantly, it's an opportunity to show the community how your actions will speak much louder than your words. Please do whatever you can to save the nation's largest urban garden, save the South Central Farm. The farmers are also making many fundraisers in order to try to save the farm, and it would behoove you all to try to contribute what you can to help save this community space. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next person? South Central Farmers?
Buenos dias, señores del Consilio.
Good morning, council members.
Este venia a ponerles el conocimiento.
I came here to let you know.
Señor, su nombre, por favor.
Mi nombre es Gerardo Vaquero.
Gracias.
My name is Gerardo Vaquero.
Le pedimos una ayuda monetaria.
We are asking you for help.
Porque estamos recaudando fondos.
Because we are collecting some money.
Para comprar la propiedad.
To purchase the property.
Porque no queremos que se que desaparezca ese lugar de Alameda y 41.
This location to not be at Alameda and 41.
Porque es un pequeño pulmón para la ciudad.
It has small importance for the city.
Y ayuda a reducir la contaminación.
And it helps reduce pollution.
Y pido la ayuda para todo el mundo en general.
I ask for your help and for all the world.
Si ustedes creen que no podemos.
In general, if you think.
Que podemos mantenernos con el smog.
We can support ourselves having smog. So don't help us. Sorry.
Gracias. Next speaker?
Buenos dias, mi nombre es José.
My name is José.
Pues aquí estamos de nuevo.
We are here again.
Pidiéndoles a todos ustedes su ayuda.
We are requesting all of you for your help.
Este pues ya que creo que el lugar ahorita está detenido.
We want to save this location.
Y pues este. Pues sí, pues les pedimos que tengan un apoyo para nosotros.
We are just asking you to support us.
Ya que nosotros no le estamos haciendo un mal a nadie.
We are not harming anyone.
Con estar en ese lugar.
We just want to be there.
Pues es lo mismo que veníamos hablando desde siempre.
Certainly, it's the same as we have been talking.
Y pues espero que nos escuchen.
So I hope you can listen to us. Thank you.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Federico Vargas.
My name is Federico Vargas.
Yo quisiera que nos dejaron allí porque yo allí enseñé.
I'd like to stay there.
Enseñé a mis hijos.
Because I taught my children there.
A cómo se da el producto de maíz, frijol, todas las verduras.
How to grow corn and beans.
Y pues quisiera que nos dejaran allí un poco más tiempo.
So I would like to stay there for longer.
Para también, allí estamos puros ancianos ya retirados y queremos ahí el espacio verde.
We are some older people there and we want to stay there.
Y para seguir enseñando a mis nietos también, si es posible.
And to continue teaching my grandchildren as well.
Gracias.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Hello, good morning. How you doing? My name is Matt Dowd. I represent Artists Jewelry Incense of Venice Beach. City councils voted unanimously on an ordinance that puts a lot of people out of work, stops them making their livelihood. I've got a permit. I don't understand how some days this is valid and some days it isn't, which is the case, but that's not the issue. There's a lottery system down at the beach. If you're a performer or any kind of vendor, you have to be down there at 8:30 in the morning on a Tuesday to go in this lottery to get a space. I mean, you know, if you're like a bitching blues guitarist out in Malibu in a bar and you're playing a gig till 2:00 in the morning and then you've got to come and get in a line in the rain to get a space just to, you know, to perform out on the beach, you know, in 2006, you'd think there'd be a computer system that would randomly do these things. I mean, it's 100 people standing out there in the rain or in the sun beating down and them waiting for a manual system that should have, you know, 100 years old. So, you know, I've got a lot of problems with the system down there and I've tried to talk to people and, you know, Marc Antonio Grant still hasn't returned my call. I've been to Bill Rosendahl's office a number of times there, ignoring the issue. I'd like to concede and yield 20 seconds to Zuma Dogg, too, at my time.
Our next step.
I'd just like to say that watch Matt Dowd tonight on cable. This is Matt Dowd, public advocate, guitarist. He plays like David Gilmore tonight, 11:30 on your Public Access Channel, Comcast, Anadelfia. Matt Dowd will be showing the injustices happening in Venice Beach and around town. Watch it tonight, 11:30.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt.
Well, good morning, Council again. My name is Michael Hunt. I've been arrested 24 times over at Venice Beach for a permit that they had issued me to work. The Ninth Appellate Court in 2004 ruled on incense and oils that was served to Officer Thusing, the same officer that arrested me. I am still getting arrested for the same issue that the Ninth Appellate Court has already ruled on. I contacted the Attorney General's Office, Mr. Johnson over at the Attorney General's Office. He says that I'm being harassed and he said that I should get in contact with my council guy to tell him what's happening. The Ninth Appellate Court has already ruled on the First Amendment issue and I'm still being harassed now, 9105. I was in the office with the head of LAX, Larry Webster, David Shine, Captain Williams and Captain Hillman. They have already approved me. They said I couldn't be nighed up under the First Amendment. This meeting took place for about an hour. I was then allowed to go back on the beach at that particular time, based upon the federal constitution. All the experts that I talked to said that there is no way that the federal doesn't supersede the state and the state doesn't supersede the LA municipal code. And why are my First Amendment rights being violated? And why hasn't my council guy researched the issue to really stick up and say, this has already been ruled on by the federal courts in the first quarter of 2004, Esau Benson versus the City of Los Angeles? It's all right there in black and white. The courts, the Superior Courts has no ruling because it's already been ruled on by the federal courts. Bill, you should really look into it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dogg. Welcome to council, Mr. Dogg.
It's time for the Zuma Dogg Show, y'all in City Council. By the way, you can watch my TV show on Public Access. If you've got Comcast and you've got Anadelfia cables, Public Access tonight, 11:30 PM. We'll be documenting the injustices and mistruths that are being bamboozled upon the permit holders who paid their money on Venice Beach. Everybody watching right here, in case you don't know, Zuma Dogg is here to tell you that they're trying to wipe everything off of Venice Beach that makes of Venice Beach. They're arresting people for bird seed. They call that littering. Someone was wearing a Speedo. They arrested him for indecent exposure. They told Zuma Dogg I had to turn my stereo down. I was making too much noise, even though I was within legal restrictions. He said, "Well, if you don't change anyway, we'll just find something else to get you on." Then I was thrown out of City Hall. I was here Friday. They threw me out of City Hall for no reason at all, just because I looked like somebody that was undesirable, as the policeman said. We got an undesirable. He told me to exit the building. I said, "I'm allowed to be in the building." And then the lieutenant overruled that Barney Fife type of cop who threw me out and they let me back in. So now I got a civil complaint, y'all. Yeah, yeah. Check out the Zuma Dogg right here now. City Los Angeles citizen complained for him because they're trying to deny me my First Amendment rights. That's the point, y'all. So everybody right here, they would have told Jim Morrison he couldn't talk to Ray Manzarek, y'all, and that's messed up. They'll try to tell Arnold Schwarzenegger he could only work out with five-pound weights on Venice if they had it up to them, y'all. Those are the types of things happening. So everybody right here, you're not allowed to sell incense, jewelry, T-shirts, all that on Venice Beach. Y'all don't know that if Zuma Dogg wasn't here to break it down for you, y'all. Now, if you want to see more about it, tune into your Public Access because we turning up the heat, y'all, because the council got bamboozled into voting into a law that has no relevance because it's federally mandated that supersedes it. So they got a bill of goods that they voted on because they didn't do the research. How come we know that that law's got no relativity over the federal mandate? Because we did research. Zuma Dogg, hooni hoo! You feel me? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Valerie Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Valerie Stewart is our next speaker. If this, I have a number of cards that say general comment or item number three. If there's something that is agendized already, we can't take public comment per our council rules on that item, but if there is general public comment not on that item, this would be the time to come forward. So Valerie Stewart? I can please ask everybody to please keep their conversations to a minimum so we can listen. Thank you.
This is general public comment time, right?
Yes, general public comment.
Oh, okay. I wasn't, didn't realize. It's this item three here, is this the same item three that I'm commenting on?
No, can't comment on item three yet. If it's for item three, I'll put that with item three.
I'm trying to make certain what I'm doing right now. I sent in, I turned in.
Why don't you wait then, ma'am? Because we can't have you comment on item three at this portion of the meeting.
Oh, okay. But I will make a general public comment that I was unprepared to make. I'm Valerie Stewart and I'm the daughter of Nick Stewart, Edna Stewart, who founded the Ebony Showcase Theater, which you took in eminent domain several years ago. So my comment will involve redevelopment and eminent domain. I know some of you personally. I know Tom Labange. We've been to his, met him years and years ago. I don't think anyone is aware of the way that the redevelopment agency actually operates. And I'm hoping that possibly Tom Labange or Herb Wesson or someone will call me into their office to look at the internal documents that I have showing that at the time that there was public money available to the public, that Nate Holden, who you named your new theater actor, formed a nonprofit organization called it Ebony Showcase Theater, diverted millions of dollars, tried to divert it to his friends, but instead diverted it to the city, who took the theater, sued my father and mother in eminent domain. I think you were told that we had lost the property and that they were saving it, but why sue the owner? The reason I'm saying this is that there are other people being affected by the very same laws, methods and illegal maneuvers made by the CRA under the redevelopment. I see people over here thinking they're going to get jobs, thinking they're going to get homes. I'm being shut up.
Thank you.
But I do want people to know that there are things they need to know and to see.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your testimony. Chris Chabell for general public comment.
Good morning, City Council. Well, I think I have the attention of one person. Last night, a reporter told me at the Gower Street, homeless housing for the chronically homeless is breaking ground in December or January. Though you told us last night that nothing had been settled. First, I wanted to ask, what happens to Grandma Moses? Is she to be brought out for Christmas? And at 78 years old, where will she go? And so much for the town hall meeting and our concerns, which were not met, and that the 30 providers and more than 20 low-income housing in our part of town. And do you want to have development to go through? Who will want to live within all the problems that we have in Hollywood? And it seems that we're getting all the problems of the city. I think it's time that the rest of the city takes some of the burden off Hollywood and downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ziggy Cruz.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ziggy Cruz and I'm here today to address you with the following. I'm utterly concerned with the way public hearings are being held and handled. You can call me a naive German, but I was under the impression that public hearings are meant in the way that the council members or the commissioners of the city departments are here to hear the public and their concerns or support for a certain item. After all, the public took the time and in many cases, the courage to go to the hearing to be heard and not just to amuse the city council or the commissioners. As in many cases with this particular city council, the public hearing seemed to be an unnecessary part because no matter what the public has to say, the vote's already in. The reason I'm saying this is because I've watched several times the city council per Channel 35 and I must say that I wonder how many, how any vote can be tallied so fast when the council members were not even in their seats in order to place their vote. Unless you show me your system, how that works, I am under the impression that you came in to the public meeting with the pre-ruling in mind. In other words, this only means that you made a decision before you heard the public speak. Then again, the commissioners of a different department must be watching you too because whatever goes on in city council sets a standard for the remaining city departments. That is why I would like to urge you, dear council members, to set the standard by staying in your seats, pay attention to the public, and if a certain item on the agenda demands a vote from the council, please take it, take in all old and new testimony and evidence before rendering any decision. This might cause to delay a vote that day, but you are the servant of the public and the public deserves that you are treating them fairly. You are in the end the ones that make, in many cases, the life-altering decisions over these people's work, home and properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ziggy. Our next speaker is Robert Blue.
Good morning. Today, we later on will be talking about private development and I just wanted to talk about in general the use of eminent domain for private use, where the city, in this case, the city of LA, but other cities have too, used eminent domain to take it away from a small private owner and a small business owner and give it to another wealthy private owner, wealthy corporation. And that's what we're doing. And just this weekend, Maxine Waters spoke very strongly against the use of eminent domain for private use. And she also spoke against redevelopment as well. I was quite surprised. And in the Kelo case that was heard last summer in the Supreme Court, the NAACP, the SCLC and the AARP jointly filed a friend-of-the-court brief against the city of New London in favor of the small homeowner. And that's back in last May of this year, the city council voted to give the authority to the CRA to use eminent domain, which they have done at Hollywood and Vine, and they're kicking out 30 small businesses. And at the same time, the city has First, I wanted to ask, what happens to Grandma Moses? Is she to be brought out for Christmas? And at 78 years old, where will she go? And so much for the town hall meeting and our concerns, which were not met, and that the 30 providers and more than 20 low-income housing in our part of town. And you want to have development to go through? Who will want to live within all the problems that we have in Hollywood? And it seems that we're getting all the problems of the city. I think it's time that the rest of the city takes some of the burden off Hollywood and downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ziggy Cruz.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ziggy Cruz, and I'm here today to address you with the following. I'm utterly concerned with the way public hearings are being held and handled. You can call me a naive German, but I was under the impression that public hearings are meant in the way that the council members or the commissioners of the city departments are here to hear the public and their concerns or support for a certain item. After all, the public took the time and in many cases, the courage to go to the hearing to be heard and not just to amuse the city council or the commissioners. As in many cases with this particular city council, the public hearing seemed to be an unnecessary part because no matter what the public has to say, the vote's already in. The reason I'm saying this is because I've watched several times the city council per Channel 35, and I must say that I wonder how many... How any vote can be tallied so fast when the council members were not even in their seats in order to place their vote? Unless you show me your system, how that works, I am under the impression that you came in to the public meeting with the pre-ruling in mind. In other words, this only means that you made a decision before you heard the public speak. Then again, the commissioners of a different department must be watching you too because whatever goes on in city council sets a standard for the remaining city departments. That is why I would like to urge you, dear council members, to set the standard by staying in your seats, pay attention to the public. And if a certain item on the agenda demands a vote from the council, please take in all old and new testimony and evidence before rendering any decision. This might cause to delay a vote that day, but you are the servant of the public, and the public deserves that you are treating them fairly. You are, in the end, the ones that make, in many cases, the life-altering decisions over these people's work, home, and properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ziggy. Our next speaker is Robert Blue.
Good morning. Today, we later on will be talking about private development. And I just wanted to talk about in general the use of eminent domain for private use, where the city, in this case, the city of L.A., but other cities have too, used eminent domain to take it away from a small private owner and a small business owner and give it to another wealthy private owner, wealthy corporation. And that's what we're doing. And just this weekend, Maxine Waters spoke very strongly against the use of eminent domain for private use. And she also spoke against redevelopment as well. I was quite surprised. And in the Kelo case that was heard last summer in the Supreme Court, the NAACP, the SCLC, and the AARP jointly filed a friend-of-the-court brief against the city of New London in favor of the small homeowner. And that's back in last May of this year. The city council voted to give the authority to the CRA to use eminent domain, which they have done at Hollywood and Vine. And they're kicking out 30 small businesses. And at the same time, the city is offering money to Capitol Records to stay. So it's kind of what's wrong with this story? There's a lot of contradictions going on here. So anyway, I'll speak more about that later, and thank you.
Thank you. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson, neighborhood organizer in the 13th. I reside in Mr. Robert U.'s Seven-Star Motel in room number 104 at 1730 North La Brea. Sir, as Mayor Villarosa brings the city's attention to the process of bringing a national football team to the city, back to the city, remember former City Councilman Burnson's determination to protect the city from scam artists who find the city a playing field of dreams. Mr. Burnson's genius established that to make a sports team dependent upon the city for financial support robs a team of its spirit. Mr. Burnson set the standard. The Raiders moved to Oakland because of its weak financial position. I believe that you should... No matter what the cost, a journey of 1,000 miles begins with a single step. I believe that in renovating the Coliseum and bringing the Raiders back, the future's assured. Where a national football team in South Los Angeles would essentially electrify that population there. I mean... The home of the Raiders is the Coliseum. Why not put Marcus Allen in the owner's box? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning. I only have two minutes. I have a lot to talk about, so let's get right into it. First of all, I think the city council ought to pass a little law regulating public comment. Yes, I said that. Regulating public comment. Talking about what I consider to be the frivolous use of public comment. I think people that speak here ought to use their two minutes talking about city business, not promoting a cable-access TV show and certainly not... I don't even know what was going on earlier today with... But I was gonna say Prozac for that fellow. But just a thought. Just regulating public comment, like frivolous lawsuits. We have some attorneys around here. Frivolous use of public comment. But I don't want to take... That's already 30 seconds used up. All right, now, first of all, I want to congratulate... This is city-related. My friend, believe it or not... Listen to this, Janice. My friend is now the White House Press Secretary, Tony Snow. Congratulations to Tony Snow, only in America. Now, I know the mayor. I know the press secretary. How long until I'm in the Oval Office, right? That's a joke. Now, again, to borrow from the playbook, no offense to Councilman Wesson and Councilman Parks, Chief Parks and Jan Perry. To borrow from Martin Luther King, I have a dream... I had a dream, actually, last night. Now that Tony Snow is White House Press Secretary, I had a dream that this city council we had in this great John Furaro chamber, Governor Schwarzenegger... Get ready for this, folks. George W. Bush and Antonio Villarosa, the mayor of Los Angeles, together, working on solving the problems in the city of L.A. Problems are not Democratic or Republican: crime, traffic, economy, homelessness. Great meeting last night with Molly. It's great in your office, Eric. Molly was wonderful last night. That's my dream, and I'd like to see it happen. And I'd like to see it happen in my lifetime. I'll be 56 in December, and I'm in pretty good health. Now, for the best part of the meeting. Holly Trolley. I wrote a song for the Holly Trolley in Hollywood Boulevard. Hey, Holly, Holly Trolley. Hey, Holly Trolley-o. Hey, Holly, Holly Trolley. Hey, Holly Trolley-o. I used to drive my car in Hollywood. Hey, Holly Trolley-o. Now I ride the Holly Trolley. Hey, Holly, Holly Trolley-o. I don't care. Holly Trolley, number one. Hey, Holly Trolley-o. Save on gas and have some fun. Hey, Holly Trolley-o. Now, we can have... We can have... In my vision, we can have Mayor Villarosa, Labonge, Garcetti, everybody else in the Channel 35. You like that? I'm done.
Appreciate it. All right. Our next speaker is Maggie Levin. Thank you for the music. Maggie Levin? Sorry, is Ms. Levin here? I like it. Maggie Levin? Going once, going twice? Okay. And for general public comment, Aaron Epstein? Yes, Mr... Excuse me, Mr. Wesson. Hold on one second, Mr. Epstein. Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President and members, I just want to know, would now be an appropriate time to suggest that Melrose Larry write the lyrics and we have Zuma Dog sing them?
It might be the appropriate time. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Epstein, please.
Good morning. Two quick comments. First of all, I invested a few years ago $85,000 of my own money to defend the Ralph M. Brown Open Meetings Act. There's a fellow that was at this stand a few minutes ago waving and screaming and promoting a TV show. That was an abuse of the Ralph M. Brown Open Meetings Act, and it was a perfect vehicle argument for people against the act. I hope that the members of the general public show respect for all bodies and not do what that gentleman did. The other comment I have is, I don't know if you saw it, but in this morning's Los Angeles Times obituary column, there was an obituary for a lady that passed on a few days ago, James Jacobs. She was an activist in New York City who was concerned about community planning. When Robert Moses, the most well-known urban planner in this country, planned to put a freeway through Lower Manhattan, she stood up, got her friends together, and said, "No, we must preserve our neighborhoods. We must preserve our cities, no freeways." And she won. I'm not saying all of her arguments were invalid for Los Angeles, but I do say they are certainly worth listening to and reading. She wrote a book called The Life and Death of American Cities. If any of you good people, council members, would like a copy of it, please let me know. And I'm offering a gift. I hope it's legal. I'm offering a gift of that book to everybody that's present. Officer, if you'd like to pass this article on, we'd be more than happy to have a copy of it.
Thank you. We'll make sure one of the sergeants-at-arms gets that article. Thank you very much, Mr. Epstein. Maggie Levin is our next speaker. We have a cordless microphone for you, ma'am.
Can you hold it? Can you hold it for me? Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti, city council member, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maggie Levin. I recently read an article in the L.A. Times that disturbed me and my friends and neighbors. You are considering making it against the law to feed birds. We disabled people, I know with me another 20 children and adults. We cannot have dogs or cats at home. We are going and feeding birds, but we don't take so much. Please, Mr. President, don't let it work for the people who are against the birds. When I'm at home after 15 operations, I can't walk. I can't do nothing. The only thing to sit on my wheelchair and feed birds on the street. But I don't do it against the law. I never in my life went to court, and I never make something against the law. But please don't make that not feeding birds. In the 18-year-hundreds, Mr. Garcetti, in the 18-year-hundreds, there was an epidemic here in America that many people died. And they brought the government of America and the government of London. They decided that birds can eat the bugs and that they brought a lot of sicknesses here in America. And now they are killing squirrels, birds, and many animals. Please do something against it because they are the friend of the disabled. Thank you very much. Have a happy and healthy day.
Thank you very much, Ms. Levin. And we're checking on your address right now to make sure you connect with the proper council member. Thank you very much for coming down here. Our next speaker is Jose Aguilar. And then we'll go out to Van Nuys, where I know Dr. Wiseman is waiting.
Ready?
Good morning.
My name is Jose Aguilar. A couple of weeks ago... I mean, three or four weeks ago, I stood in front of the shul and my council member, Mr. Weezer, said that he was going to produce an ordinance in order to identify the historical buildings within the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Aguilar, could I ask you just to put your face a little bit further back because it's distorting a little bit what you're saying? Thank you. We pick it up well with that microphone. We'll pause your time. Thank you.
Lost some time there. Okay. Where was I? Okay, the historical... Yeah, I was in front of the shul. And my councilman, Jose Weezer, was going to propose an ordinance to identify the historical sites within the city of Los Angeles. It just so happened that Bernard's luggage is listed on the state national registry as a historical building. It has the support of the Conservancy, has the support of the local Hollywood Conservancy groups in that area. And I find it very hypocritical that this city council, after what you've done in Boyle Heights, after you destroyed the Vladeck Building, after you went after the All Nations Center, now you're going after the Bernard's luggage. I find that this city council has little...
Sorry, Mr. Aguilar. As I said before, item number three and 16, we can't comment on during the public comments. So if there are other general public comments you'd like to give, we have a card in for you for that one as well.
I want to discuss the ordinance. And I want to discuss the identifying the historical buildings within the city of Los Angeles. And I want to discuss the preservation of those historical buildings within the city of Los Angeles. And I also want to, you know, say that if it's a Jewish historical building, it has maybe more special preservation status than maybe a non-Jewish. I want equal protection for Jewish and non-Jewish historical buildings. And this is my general comment because I feel that we are bulldozing a lot of our history in Hollywood, in Los Angeles, in Boyle Heights, everywhere. And I'm here to ask the city council to not be hypocritical and give all historical sites equal protection under the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aguilar. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys. If we can go to the remote facility, Dr. Wiseman.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Garcetti and members of the council. I'm going to present a few comments here as an activist for the neighborhood councils. There are a number of issues that I want to bring to the attention of the council and many of the people who are in your audience today. The first, of course, is gone already before you. There are a number of public comments from various points of view. The whole issue of public comments, I think, is a worthy issue for discussion in perhaps one of the committees then brought before this group because the public comments that you receive are sometimes listened to. Sometimes we're speaking to empty chairs, as I am right now. And sometimes they are of much greater importance than to be limited by two minutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Wiseman. We'll hold your time. Mr. Labonge?
Hi, thank you.
Do they have a camera?
Say that again.
So they're visual. They could see us. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Because he said he sees empty chairs. We're not... There's people here all around listening to you.
I'm delighted to see you, Mr. Labonge. Thank you, Tom.
And people are sitting throughout the chairs, I think, is his point.
But I do see a number of empty chairs just to your right there. And I miss those people sorely. We all do. Public comment is one of the few times when anyone can come before you and speak of anything. What should and should not be spoken of was already spoken of by the preceding people, and I think is worthy of much more detail. Let me get down to the other issues that are oppressing me today. We have a set of issues that is coming from the mayor's office and that should be brought to the attention of the city council. As you know, there was an issue of the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Congress that was to have been participating in the Neighborhood Council Convention drawn by the Dunn in June. The mayor's office and his minions reversed themselves twice. They said, "No, you can't do it." Then again, they said, "You can." Recently, we've had some issue over who will be the new general manager from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. You council members will be approving in the advise-and-consent process, but we neighborhood council people are sorely disturbed by the reports that the mayor is not going to call on us to ask us what we want in our Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and the kind of person we want for our Neighborhood Empowerment general manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman.
I have several other issues, and that's one of the issues on public comment. Your time restraints, I think, do restrict us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman. We appreciate your comments and your understanding. Our next speaker is here, Donna Doherty. Would you like to come forward?
Sorry to be so far back. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the city council and ladies and gentlemen here in the room, plus all of you who are out there in the community. You realize tomorrow is a budget day, beginning here. And it is also a meeting for the Department of Disabilities of Disabilities from nine o'clock in the morning to one o'clock in the afternoon on emergency preparedness for the community. And I would say, when you're talking about the budget, perhaps the emergency preparedness idea for Griffith Observatory, the fact that we have $93 million of our people's money into that observatory, and there has been an effort, a negative effort, to block access at the front four doors ongoing through the whole 15 years of the planning and the renovation. It is still there, and it is so wrong. We, if you aren't going to plan for us to get another design or alternative designs, there is absolutely nothing on paper anywhere by two highly-paid architectural firms and all the other people involved. There is no alternative design. We can have sloping walkways on either side of the steps so that everybody has a choice, and that means universal design. What is wrong with us that we cannot do that? We will be the shame of every city after $93 million getting the top equipment for that observatory. We don't make access for everybody with a child in a stroller. We make them try to get up 12 steps. We do the same to the disabled. We put a sign on the middle of the front lawn as a disgrace for our city to tell the disabled they need to go to the end of a wing around the backside in one door. I'm sorry, this is not right. So if you're thinking of the budget, think in terms, yes, we need some more money for that. I'll help raise it. But we need it to happen before they open because if we open without the access at the front four doors, I cannot tell you in collecting signatures on our petitions for more than five years, I cannot tell you how many people have said, "We will sue the city." So you should plan in your budget. If you won't plan for the access at the front, the sloping walkways as we have at UCLA, if you won't plan for that, put a lot of money in the budget for the lawsuits. This is a civil rights issue. It is not disabled, ADA. It is a civil rights issue for everybody. Remember, super everybody, the acronym for our fight here is Shared Use Pathways for Equal Rights. Super is the acronym. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange, show a response.
As note, Ms. Doherty, on, I believe, May 10th, Ms. Doherty, there'll be a public meeting in Griffith Park at the Los Angeles Zoo Auditorium to cover many of these issues. I wanted to announce it. There'll be a formal notice. I want to make sure we don't conflict with any issues of our budget. Thank you, Mrs. Doherty. You'll have a chance to come right there with those people. I'll speak with you to the ropes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Okay, that closes our general public comment for today. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 15 one week to May 3rd.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number 15? If there's not, so ordered.
And there's also been a request to send item 19 back to the Transportation Committee.
Okay, item 19, colleagues, is there any objection to sending that back to Transportation Committee? If not, that'll be unanimously ordered as well.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 21, with the exception of items 15 and 19, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, I'll call three and 16 special. Other specials, colleagues? Ms. Perry? Nope? Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's hold items 1, 2, and 4 until we have 12 members, and on the balance, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 22 through 59 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's hold 22 through 26 as well, since those are ordinances. Any other specials, colleagues, in 27 through 59? 37 for Mr. Labange.
And, Mr. President, you do have cards on 47 and 59 and 45 as well.
Cards on 45, 47, and 59, was that?
Yes, sir.
And 59, they'll call those special for a public hearing. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 60 through 63 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold the closed session items on the desk.
On the continuation agenda, item 64 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Okay. Do we have any cards on 64? If not, let's open and close the public hearing on that. Anybody wishing to call 64 special? Mr. Parks?
I'd like 64 special.
Okay. 64 special for Mr. Parks. Why don't we recess this meeting, go to the special meeting now? Please call the roll.
Cardinals, Gruehl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and acquiesce. Mr. President?
Okay. I know Ms. Perry wants to do number one special and Ms. Han number two, which we'll hold anyway so we get 12 members as well, since it's an ordinance.
Okay, we have to...
Unless you'd like to... I'm sorry. Okay, why don't we have number one first, Ms. Perry? Why don't we take that up first?
Mr. President, if we, do we need to wait for 12 members on this item?
Not on this one, no. Not on yours.
If there are no cards, I'm more than happy to let it go through on consent.
Great, okay. Let's prepare the roll on item one.
And forthwith.
Sure. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved, and we'll send that forthwith without objection. Okay. Let's hold two from the special meeting as well on the agenda. Let's go back now to, we have three and 16. Let's take up 37 first, if we may.
Item 37 was called special by councilmember Labange, and there is a card from the public as well.
Mr. Labange? We have item number 37 before us.
Does anyone here can report on 37 from the departments? And, Mr. President, as someone comes in and report, I think we should salute Councilwoman Perry and all the members of the Gopher Borough Organization 442 for all their work, and salute them as great Americans. Mr. Fujioke, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but this item here is a report. Do you have anybody who can report on this item? Do we know? Right. Can we hold it on the desk? Members, I wanted to bring it to our attention, the importance of the Public Works Inspectors and how they could help and assist us improve the quality of life. If I could put that on the desk, because I want to share just a brief time about this, an important role that the Public Works Inspectors plays in our city. So could I hold it on the desk and see if staff is available or nearby?
Sure, we'll hold it.
Thank you. Oh, wait, Mr. Fujioke.
Yeah, Mr. Fujioke.
Something real quickly, what it does is it asks us to conduct an internal study.
Right.
And given that it speaks to adding positions, and albeit for a very important function, we're literally 24 hours away from starting the budget process. This would be an ideal subject to discuss during the budget process and to bring back when we come to full consult.
So if you're CEOs, look at that. Thank you, Mr. Fujioke.
Yeah.
I'm pleased. I just want to stress, members, and I know Mr. Smith knows this so well, the importance of our Public Works Inspectors and what their roles are and how they maybe could be more effective in improving the quality of life of Los Angeles. So if you could continue that...
Yeah, we'll make sure we'll get the report done.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is a card on this item as well, so if we can ask to come forward at this time, Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. It's now time to comment on item number 37. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Erica Sette, I hope you're not confused on the cards. Okay, this is on number 37.
That's correct, number 37.
Okay, correct. Good. This is addressed, again, dealing with United States of America gas trades in over 20 countries. President Bush, there is no more time in deleting all major gas firms like Sharon, Arco, and Mobil. What have happened in President Chico country has been done by our AWOL President Bush. These gas companies, Ukraine customers, and Spain workers are not paying for their gas with a card for their gas, with a card or ticket receipt. All monies that is made by the public people and trades and these gas companies are used to build bombs...
Yes, Councilman Smith. Excuse me, Sylvia.
...are used to build...
Okay, please stick to the subject matter of item 37, Ms. Hawkins.
This is dealing with gold mines and dealing with trash bins. Again, for their gas with a card, they are not paying their gas bills. All money that is made by the public people and trades are used to build bombs and missiles to destroy all rich and luxury areas and churches in United States of America. Since the United States is asking all these companies to leave the United States of America with their people, especially whom are illegally here, all mountain areas and especially Mount Area area will be destroyed. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Madam President, you do need to take a vote on that item.
37. Okay, colleagues, we need to vote on item 37. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate that vote.
11 ayes.
Next item.
Items 3 and 16 were called special by councilmember Garcetti.
Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move, we've had public hearing on this, but I would move that we have a 10-minute public hearing on this. We've got a number of public hearings, but I ask that we do five minutes for each side. If there's no objection, my colleagues, this is on the development project at Hollywood and Vine, large, one of our largest development projects in the city, and this is an important matter. So if there's no objection, I would move five minutes each side with a minute per speaker.
Okay, we'll reopen, having the public hearing, and you said five minutes on each side? Okay, we'll start with the against side. So I would suggest that you hold your comments as briefly as possible. Are we giving them one minute per speaker? That's not very many. I have Robert Silverstein, Ziggy Cruz, Robert Blue, Chris Shabel. Mr. City Attorney, you want to say something?
Thank you, Madam President. And just to remind the council members, this is a matter requiring heightened attention from the council members.
Okay, members, that means we need to be probably in our seats and listening attentively.
Before my time begins, may I ask? I represent Bernard Blue and the, I'm sorry, I represent Robert Blue and the Bernard Luggage Building. They have been in business for 60 years. It is not fair to limit them to five minutes after 60 years in business.
Sure.
And I would respectfully ask that you extend this. We are an appellant on a vesting tentative track map on a zone change, a height of district change, side yard setback, SB 1818, historic resources issues, significant eminent domain issues. For 60 years, as the last family-owned and operated business that's been in Hollywood and Vine for that long, I think he deserves more than a minute per speaker.
Members, it's up to you. Does anybody move for longer than five minutes on each side? Okay, seeing none, we'll stick to what we had. It's up to, it's up to the speakers. We have five minutes against and five minutes for, so it's up to you on how you want to divide that.
Thank you. We have submitted additional objections today. I don't think that you can possibly rule because you haven't read these objections, just as you are not listening to us now and just as you're denying our due process and just as there are procedural unfairnesses by limiting somebody who's been in business for 60 years and constricting them to a mere number of seconds. I would respectfully submit that these objections, which are now with the clerk and in front of all of you, must be reviewed, including the new expert witness testimony which we have provided from Arthur Cassin, the senior-most traffic engineer in the state of California on transportation issues, from Hans Giroux on noise and air quality issues. We have raised significant new issues regarding cumulative impacts that have never been studied and that render any environmental compliance here alleged by the city to be inadequate. At a minimum, a supplemental EIR needs to be prepared for this project because there are approximately 3,500 new residential units going up within one quarter of a mile of Hollywood and Vine, which was never studied in the 2003 redevelopment plan EIR. While that EIR studied a maximum development envelope, it did so in a way that distributed all of the impacts over the 1,100 acres of the project site. It did not analyze the specific impacts at Hollywood and Vine, and we have cited both the facts and the case law and significant expert testimony.
Excuse me just a minute. Councilman Reyes, do you have a point of clarification?
Counter to what the speaker had just said, we have councilmembers in their seat. We are listening. He is making a statement that is erroneous. We are in our seats, we are listening, and we are assessing the statements as being indicated. So counter to your statement for the record, we are listening.
And if I could also...
And if I'd like you to read as well as listen. In order for you to hear, you must listen, and listening is not just an auditory...
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilman Perry, do you have a point of clarification?
Yeah, I wanted to concur with Mr. Reyes. I was surprised that the attorney representing the appellant said that. We are listening. At the start of this proceeding, you reminded us that is quasi-judicial, and we did go to our seats, and we are listening for the record. For those of you who might be listening or dialing in on the telephone or are in Van Nuys, we are listening.
And if I could also add, the monitor at each council desk has a video transmission of the podium. Can I ask? I can't tell how much time is left for Mr. Blue's side. Can you let me know, please, before I continue?
Let me have a point of clarif... Do we have the five-minute clock running? We can't do, we just do 10 minutes if the 10-minute clock is running.
I'm sorry, I don't see the 10-minute clock.
Is the 10-minute clock running? Is that on? I can't see it from here.
I'm trying to allocate the time so that others can speak, but I don't...
I agree, and I...
I don't know what time is left.
I mean, the individual time limit you have is one minute, but we're giving five minutes to each side, against and for, so it's up to you to decide how you want to do that time. But I can't see the 10-minute clock, so, and I think they should be able to see that.
Can the clerk, can the clerk assist us on that? I understand about the five minutes. I just don't know what's left of the five minutes. I don't see a clock ticking down, so I'm not even sure if we're on the clock. In any event, since the timeframe is so... Okay, so let's begin now with our five minutes based on that clock. That's my understanding.
Yes, Mr. Garcetti. He's taking over the proceeding.
I want to clarify that it is not. We've already had a couple of minutes of discussion.
All right, so for clarification one more time, Mr. Garcetti? I didn't hear the beginning of what you just said.
I moved for five minutes on each side, one minute per speaker of both for and against, and I want to be respectful to both the for side and the against side on this. I think that was as crystal clear as I could be. And I, and I hear that. It's not just this issue. When people come here and they want to have many minutes and they're very critical issues, I do hear... Please, Mr. Silverstein, I understand that. I've also spoken to members of the Plum Committee, in which I believe there's five minutes. Personally, given to you a two-minute extension on that, and that's why we have public hearings both in the committee and in the council. If we did, on each one of these items, hour-long public hearings, and many of them, items are very important here, we could literally never vote on the sometimes up to 100 items we have per day. So that's just to clarify that. Thank you.
So Mr. Silverstein has one minute, and the clock is running as of now.
Thank you. My co-council, Robert Ferguson, filed a petition for review with the California Supreme Court yesterday regarding our challenge to the redevelopment plan. To paraphrase Winston Churchill, "We will fight on the beaches, we will fight in the air, we will fight on the sea." And unless Bob Blue and Bernard Luggage are either carved out of the project or a compromise is found, which allows him to retain his property ownership and to be a part of the Hollywood community that his parents and he built and are part of for 60 years, we will continue to fight. We have filed a lawsuit last month. We are adding to that lawsuit. We will be getting the resolution of necessity overturned because of a conflict of interest with Ms. Janice Apparicio, which we have discovered. We would respectfully submit that this hearing be put over as one final comment because I have requested numerous documents three weeks ago under the California Public Records Act, which have not been produced and have prejudicially impaired our ability to submit more meaningful comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ziggy Cruz.
Hello again. My name is Ziggy Cruz, and I'm taking this opportunity to say to you that due to the newfound facts on those particular items today, number three and 16, I urge the city council to disregard the requests from the city departments. As you may or may not know, the CRA board's ruling from March 2nd of 2006 is being challenged for a conflict of interest matter and should be either overruled or thrown out by the city council in due time. Therefore, I believe that all representations to these councils in relation to these projects on Hollywood and Vine need to be continued to a later day. I'm certain that you can retain illegal information from either the CRA, the developers for the project, or from Mr. Bob Blue's attorney. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Blue.
Thank you. Today, some, one of the things, this project, this project keeps growing in cost, is being promised as union jobs, and yet the developer, according to the L.A. Business Journal, January 2nd, the developer had until March of this year to make a deposit of $9.6 million, and that has, deposit hasn't been made. And secondly, I was in here when the council chamber was overflowing with city union employees, and they've been working two years without a contract. So I'd like to suggest also that you, you know, get your own house in order before you try to do other things. You should treat your own employees better. On March, we have until June 25th, and then the city of L.A.'s going to force us out to build a luxury hotel. Anyway, you slice it, a $400 a night luxury hotel is not a public use, it's a privileged use. And finally, they're giving a lot of taxpayer monies to this. They can't fund the project. They're using $180 million worth of California low-interest tax-exempt bonds to fund the project. All four sides of the block are being developed privately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blue. Chris Shabel, next speaker.
I think I need to get a little motor on my trusty walker. Are we speaking on three and 16? We should have an extra minute because I've got comments on both. Everyone in town now knows about the Kilo case, and they know that the cities can take properties. Well, I'd like to advise everybody in L.A., the city is now taking properties. It's not for the rich, who are litigious, that was a CRA comment, but for the poor and the middle class, the ones who can't afford to get an attorney or have difficulty getting an attorney. Shame on the Democrats on this council. You are supposed to be the ones who are expected to protect the weak instead of giving welfare to the rich developers. And on the...
Thank you very much, Ms. Shabel. Next speaker is Aaron Epstein.
I was the first one in this council chamber this morning, and you're cutting me off. You're violating my First Amendment rights. I was number one in this chamber this morning and gave...
Next speaker will be Mr. Epstein, please.
Madam Chairman, if that lady's card was in front of mine, I will yield my time to her. If that lady was ahead of me, I will yield my time to her.
Sir, I'm merely going through the cards. I'm not even sure of her name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if you'd like to take your time now, because almost the five minutes is up.
Okay, real quickly, if anybody knows anything about salesmanship and insurance selling, the person that can speak the last has the advantage, and I really don't feel comfortable with asking the people that are opposed to a project to speak before the people that are... to speak before the people that are for a project. At the last time eminent domain was discussed in this chambers, a rationalization was offered by our Hollywood council people, saying that, hey, we're not eminent domaining. The people are... The project... The subject property is under negotiation. Well, I wish to read to you a statement. Once you've decided to go ahead with the project, you cannot have free enterprise-type of negotiation. I'll repeat, once you've decided to go ahead with the project, you cannot have a free enterprise-type of negotiation. These words are not mine. They are quoted directly from Mr. Alejandra Ortiz, a prominent local architect who is on the local CRA board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carol Knapp. Deborah Lugo. Valerie Stewart.
The words to this 1970s song are dedicated to Eric Garcetti, the CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency, and L.A. Housing Department, and any other government agency dedicated to stealing private property on behalf of corporations. Smiling faces sometimes pretend to be your friend. Smiling faces show no traces of the evil that lurks within. They don't tell the truth. Smiling faces, smiling faces tell lies, and I got proof. Not only do they lie, they cheat and steal too. Acre upon acre of private property to give to corporate cronies in exchange for campaign contributions. Not only do they take our property, they use our money to do it so that any small business that can possibly remain cannot compete. That's why I call you all corporate communists, the exact same team as the neo-fascists on the right. They also have smiling faces. You pretend to be for the poor and downtrodden. The truth is, you're forcing all of us to become the poor and downtrodden.
Thank you. Deborah Lugo. Deborah Lugo. Okay.
But your days of criminally conspiring against the people are numbered. A whole bunch of bills and initiatives are in California and the federal government to clip your wings. We shall overcome. P.S. Garcetti pretends to be an environmentalist, drives a hybrid car, then violates EIR mandates in both lawsuits, in Hollywood and in the Filipino community in Echo Park, sued for Shame on you. The city has destroyed more housing than they've created, and the promise of jobs never materialize.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Valerie Stewart. Yes, it is.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on behalf of Bob Blue because of what happened to the Ebony Showcase Theater. I have seen this process in action. You've had meeting after meeting after meeting about Bob Blue, but you give Bob Blue 30 seconds to speak. There's a rendering on your website of a never-ending building that you were calling a hotel with $300 a night rooms, which will not provide homes for these people that think they're getting homes, nor will it provide jobs for them. Your public hearings are sham because you've had meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. You've drawn plans for this building. It didn't take you one second, one minute, or 30 seconds to draw those plans. Why not give the people who are affected the actual time to participate in the process? I wanted to say that... Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached the five-minute, I believe it is. So I'll read the names of the other individuals who are here in opposition to this proposal. Robert Needleman, Jose Aguilar, and Charles Fisher. We'll now go, I believe, to those that are in favor. Set the clock for the same amount of time. Mr. Dale Goldsmith, followed by LaRoon... LaRon, sorry. LaRon Gubler. Mary Sinar.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Dale Goldsmith. I'm a partner with the law firm of Armbruster and Goldsmith, representing the project developers. Before I respond to some of the prior comments, I would like... There are a number of supporters here of the project, representing a broad spectrum of the community. I'd like to ask them to stand for just a second so that you know that they're here. Thank you. You heard a lot of discussion and a lot of testimony. Not a lot of it really relates to the zoning decisions that you're going to be making today and the appeals of the track map. The only issue that I think really merits a response with respect to this particular decision is the assertion that the project does not comply with the California Environmental Quality Act due to the issue of cumulative impacts. The issue of cumulative impacts were addressed in an EIR-for-the-Plan Amendment in 2003 and three separate addenda, including two of which were approved by this council. In addition, there is expert testimony in the record to the fact that there are no significant impacts, other than those that have already been adequately addressed in the SEQA determinations. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. LaRon?
Good morning, council members. I'm LaRon Gubler, president of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. As we all know, Hollywood and Vine is the most famous intersection in the city of Los Angeles and one of the most famous intersections in this country. Very well-known. However, for years, this area has languished. It's a shadow of what it once was. It's not been an area that we could be proud of, an area that's drawn tourists to see what was there. They couldn't figure out why it was ever famous. Well, today, we have an opportunity to bring a project together, to approve it finally, that's going to restore the glamour to that area. It's a catalytic project that's going to meet tremendous community needs. You've seen the people behind me who stood to show that they're supportive of this project. We have the chamber representing the business. We have lane. We have unions. We have churches. We have neighborhood councils and community groups that support this project. Why? Because of its public benefits. This project will bring, for the first time in 36 years, a new ground-up hotel to Hollywood, public spaces that the public will enjoy, affordable housing, which is badly needed. It's something that we urge you to approve. It's been five years to get to this point. It's time to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Sinar.
Good morning. I'm Mary Sinar, and I'm representing the mayor's office. I'd like to read this statement. The mayor's office of housing and economic development is here today to express Mayor Villarreal's support for the mixed-use project at Hollywood and Vine. The project provides substantial investment in and community benefits, made possible by the partnership of the city, the CRA, MTA, and the private developers, Legacy Partners, and Gate House Capital. Investment in and community benefits to the Hollywood redevelopment project area are significant, including thousands of construction and permanent jobs, quality housing, and job training programs. The mayor's office supports the approval of the council's action today, and we look forward to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Helmi Hisrick from the CRA, CRA, excuse me, and then Socorro Callejas.
Good morning. I'm Helmi Hisrick with the CRA, the regional administrator for the Hollywood area. The item before you today is a zone change in a vesting tentative track map, but I just wanted to make a comment about eminent domain. I want to be very clear that the redevelopment agency always desires to settle through negotiation. We are actively working to negotiate with Robert Blue. We sincerely hope to find a way for Robert Blue to maintain his business in or near the project, and any entity, any business that is displaced by this project, and any property owner whose property is acquired within this project will be fairly compensated, and no one is being unfairly treated. So we are working actively to negotiate an agreement and hope to reach settlement, but I wanted to be clear that this is... Everything will be fairly done. Thank you.
Thank you. Socorro?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Socorro Callejas. Soy un miembro de la comunidad de Yaca. Esto se encuentra en Hollywood. Queremos pedir su apoyo, por favor.
Hello. My name is Socorro Callejas, and I'm a member of the Yaca community. We're part of the Hollywood, and we've been working on this with other members of the community for many years.
Estamos pidiendo, por favor, que apoyen el proyecto de Hollywood and Vine. Queremos nosotros y necesitamos casas de viviendas de bajos recursos.
We want to ask your support for the project on Hollywood and Vine because this brings apartments for people who don't earn much money.
Trabajos con sueldos dignos.
Jobs with living wage.
Dinero para entrenamientos para nuestra gente.
Money for job training programs.
Y sobre todo nos surge. Tenemos la necesidad de viviendas. Las rentas están subiendo mucho de precio en Hollywood. No podemos pagar.
And of everything, we urge you because of the affordable housing component, because the rents are going up in Hollywood, and people can't pay that.
Tenemos una petición de varios miembros de la comunidad para ustedes, por favor. Son firmas de la comunidad. Gracias.
We have the petition that we'd like to hand to the sergeant-at-arms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Phillips, followed by Alma Morales.
Hi, I'm Sarah Phillips with L.A. Voice. I'd like to cede my time to Alma.
Good morning. My name is Alma Morales. I work for L.A. Voice. We represent hundreds of working families in Hollywood faith communities, who are the backbone of our local economy. This project will bring much-needed affordable housing and jobs to Hollywood working families, as families are increasingly priced out of the Hollywood housing market. This project came at the perfect time for us. We used the city council to support this project and Hollywood working families.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Irma Aldana. Vivo en la comunidad de Hollywood por 23 años. Estoy representando L.A. Voice, y quiero que ustedes nos ayuden con este proyecto porque la renta ha subido demasiado y las familias están viviendo dos familias en un apartamento. Necesitamos también que se nos dé el dinero para la escuela de Hollywood, ya que esos muchachos son los futuros profesionales. Gracias.
Hello. My name is Irma Aldana, and I would like to urge you to support this project because it gives both affordable housing and money for Hollywood High School, and this is very important for our community right now, as many families are living two in one apartment. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Our next speaker is Richard Starzak, followed by Scott Campbell. Okay. Mr. Campbell?
My name is Scott Campbell. I'm vice president of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council and co-chair of the Planning Committee. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm here to let you know that we're the certified neighborhood council for this area, and on November 12 of 2003, the board voted to support this project and remains firmly behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Starzak here? Richard Starzak?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Labanche.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Can I ask staff from the CRA to come forward, please? Why don't you come to the table, please, if you will? Could you describe for us a couple of things? I know we heard some allusions to the Kelo case, which has to do with taking of residential property. Could you describe this project to the council, see if there's any relevance of that particular case at all in this, whether it's directly applicable, is that what's happening? Even though the Supreme Court did uphold something, what I understand is different, could you just detail that a little bit?
Sure. There's two significant differences between the Kelo case in New London and this case. In Kelo, the property that was acquired for economic development purposes was a single-family residence, owner occupied, and the area was not required to be defined as blighted. Eminent domain law in California is significantly more stringent than it is in Connecticut. In Hollywood, we have had a project area there for 20 years. We're 20 years into a 40-year redevelopment project area. We have litigated for the last five years on the subject of whether or not Hollywood is identified as blighted and have recently been one in the appeals court, that yes, in fact, our blight findings do stand. So we are moving forward with acquisition. We can acquire, in this case, a business property through eminent domain.
So it's not residential property?
It's not residential.
Okay. Could you describe the project just briefly?
Sure. Briefly. The project has 300 apartment units, 150 condominium units, and 200 hotel rooms.
How many of those units of apartments are affordable and at what level?
Approximately 75 to 80, and they'll be all dedicated to low-income families.
Is that what the low-interest bonds that were referred to are being used for specifically?
The bonds are a form of debt financing that will be used for the apartment, the affordable apartments.
Just for the affordable?
Yes, for that development.
So the luxury ones cannot be used, cannot be subsidized by the... Is it SIBLAC bonds that are being used?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Please continue.
I just want to comment on a couple of things. This project has significant public benefits, which have been brought up at past hearings. The living wage jobs, the hotel will be a union hotel and be reaching out to the local community to hire as a first source. The project also contributes significant tax benefits to the Hollywood, to the city of Los Angeles as a whole, and I...
Can I quantify those?
I can quantify it. We have projected this project to reach stabilization in year 2010. Between 2010 and 2036, the project will generate approximately $260 million worth of tax benefit. Of that, $167 million is directly to the city of Los Angeles in the form of transient occupancy tax, utility tax, retail tax. $92 million of that goes to both the redevelopment agency for a period of time and then ultimately to the state and to the county in form of property tax.
And today, are we voting on permission for the agency to move forward or something else? What are we voting on here today, items 3 and 16?
No. You are voting on a zone change. This is a city planning action, a zone change and a vesting tentative track map.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I know that whenever we talk about it, there are other issues around it, but just to be clear, what we're voting on today, colleagues, it is just those two land use items. I was going to give kind of two speeches, but if you'll indulge me, I'll kind of put them together, and I'll see if there's any other questions I wanted to ask you. One on the last parcel that is left, that is still in contention. I'm optimistic, and there are ongoing discussions. In fact, there's, I believe, a meeting even this afternoon. And I know, and I've talked with Mr. Blue and some of his representatives, and we have ongoing discussions. I'm trying to help accommodate something that can be mutually agreed upon there while the rest of the project continues to move along, so that we don't miss time. I can't predict the future. I don't think they can either. I respect what they need to do legally and what we need to do legally, but in terms of some of that disagreement, I would want to put that out there because it would be unfair to represent that somehow we're at loggerheads solely right now. There's obviously areas of considerable disagreement, but I am optimistic that that still can be resolved, and I'm personally involved in those discussions and trying to accommodate whether or not some things can be done between the existing developer and Mr. Blue, the landowner, to accomplish both of what he has stated to me he'd like to accomplish, as well as what the developer is trying to accomplish with the community. So I wanted to put that on the record. I also wanted to thank Mr. Silverstein for his memo, for the 11-page memo, and then the 15 exhibits that are part of it. The memo, which details not only the public records request, but the request for the supplemental EIR, the inadequacy of the 2003 EIR, in his opinion, the CRA historical resources analysis, as well as his desire for me to recuse myself from this. There are obviously then 15 exhibits that are part of what you all have on your desks, and I know some of you have been thumbing through while we've been here. And I want to thank the Plum Committee for their extensive public hearing on this, one aspect which has to do, again, with the zone change for the overall area, which includes many pieces of property, including MTA property and property that's been acquired by the developer. Colleagues, we've had many discussions of this in this council. The benefits, just the fiscal benefits that Ms. Hisrick put forward, I think are very clear. This does not even involve, and we're not even voting on, anything having to do with eminent domain, but does not involve residential eminent domain, which I think I share opinions probably differently than some people in this room, but I share opinions with some of the people who oppose this about residential eminent domain for commercial developments. But that is not possible in the Hollywood plan, which makes me pleased about the Hollywood plan that does exist. I want to thank the folks who have been a part of this, but if you look at the items that we negotiated into this, in the old days, people used to go in the back room, negotiate what was going to happen, and then come forward. The middleman, in some ways, was cut out of this. We helped facilitate the discussions directly between the neighborhood members that we saw here today and the developers, so they were the ones who actually negotiated the community benefits agreement. They are the ones who negotiated affordable housing, the high-paying jobs... They are the ones who negotiated affordable housing, the high-paying jobs. They are the ones who made sure that we took into account the context of the place. I can't think of another place that's put as much, for instance, in the local school. And that was something that didn't come from my office. Again, it came from the community of looking at Hollywood High School and linking together this project and monies to help improve the facilities at Hollywood High School. A community benefits, or sorry, beautification piece as well, which is something Chris and others have told me about in the past. Why don't any of these agreements have things that are specifically for community beautification, whether it's tree plantings or other things? The money that's in here, that was the first time that that was done, and that was based on the suggestion that she made. So the chamber, the neighborhood council, and others have all lined up support. I believe we can still resolve this one outstanding issue. And with that, I would thank you for your indulgence today and ask for your continuing support on this. This is something that we get calls from in San Francisco and New York, other places, that people are looking at as a real model for how to do responsible development that takes care of both neighborhood issues, but also human development issues in the neighborhood too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. And Mr. Garcetti, thank you for your work and the work of your staff to the Community Redevelopment Agency. Please stay there. This is a... Of all the parcels that you have to acquire, how many parcels has this been in this area generally?
For this project, there are four property owners. I believe it's six parcels.
And every one of the...
There are two parcels.
Every one of the four property owners has been cooperative in the sense of wanting to move forward.
Essentially, yes. We do have one property that we're still in negotiation with, other than the Robert Blue. So Robert Blue and then...
Does Mr. Blue know what the Community Redevelopment Agency wants to buy it for?
I think he does.
Okay. I just want to make sure that he does that. You know, Vine Street is an important part of Los Angeles, and especially about Hollywood. And I think the work is... And I hope you save the Capitol Records building for what it is up the street, and I hope it doesn't turn into what it shouldn't be, whatever that is. You and your staff work with that. But this particular block, right next to a subway station, is an ideal opportunity to try to create something very special. So I wanted to thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your work, and I support this. I'm the adjacent councilperson on this issue here. Why I support this too is the investment that all of us have made in the aspect of the transit system that is right there. Why I support this is, is you work with a coalition of people to try to bring forth a project that most, but not all, can agree with. Why I support this is I know that you have a vision, particularly Eric, that have put that on there. And I also do hope, and I know I spoke with Mr. Goldsmith, is it? Is the representative still here? I spoke that there is some public access somehow, some way, for those who could visit this facility and view the city's vistas from there, including the world-famous Hollywood sign. Because I know I've talked to people about this here, because it's important to be able to champion a vista when you build high-rise at this particular location. And I think we spoke about that, right, Mr.? And you're going to work on that in the aspect of this project. It's difficult for those who own property, or family owns property, for a long time, as we know, and it hurts. And I also think of this block too. That was where one of the very famous Brown Derby was. Of the four Brown Derby owners, one has left. And yesterday in Plum, they took into consideration that one on Los Feliz. All this adds up to the challenges that we have day in and day out, and to the challenges of a community. It isn't easy, but it's important to move forward with a project that's going to, I think, revitalize Hollywood in a different way than the work that was done at Highland, and revitalize in a neighborhood way that is really going to champion what a lot of you around this horseshoe have seen as an important model. And I think it's just so important. So, Mr. Garcetti, for your efforts and for your work, unfortunately, to the disappointment of some of those who people, and Chris Chappell, I think you were at the first neighborhood meeting with Howard Watts in 1976, when I started, and others who have been there and known over the years. Unfortunately, I don't share that view. I share the view that the work that has been done, the coalition has been built, the efforts of the councilmen, that we should move forward. So I support it. I vote on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Just one last thing. In this memo here as well, there's a request that I recuse myself from the vote based on my partner, Amy Wakeland's, being on the advisory board of the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. It says in here that I do not know if there is any compensation for that. I want to state for the record, there is absolutely no compensation. In fact, it's probably the opposite. There's a loss of compensation from other areas of life for volunteer work, and it's not part of the official board, no legal standing at all. It is literally just an advisory board that occasionally helps the organization out. I think it's very strong. We're also, and I don't know the law on this, but not married, but we have been partners and are registered as domestic partners. So I will recuse myself in abundance of caution. If Mr. Silverstein also feels that this would in any way temper my role in negotiating, trying to resolve things with Mr. Blue, I'm happy to recuse myself from that as well. So please let me know. But I will be recusing myself in abundance of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other individuals here on this item, Madam Clerk, I'd like to ask you to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 12 ayes. That item has been approved. Next item. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, items 1, 2, 4, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 were being held for 12 members, and you now have 12 members.
We now have 12 members.
And there is a card on item 22.
There's also cards on item number 2?
22.
Okay. But there's also cards on number 2. It doesn't say here. Special... It does say, excuse me, for the special meeting. Okay. So we will then call item 22. We'll keep item 22 for the card? Okay. Great. We'll go ahead and take the card, Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, on item number 22.
Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Again, on item number 2. As we continue to keep account on our seller, on the amount of people that is basically living inside of houses, schools, and buildings, we must continue to do a great job, as we are so far. We are asking all schools and colleges to please release all students out of school on good behavior and grades to return back with written documents to school giving from all schools. After legalization is complete and the order and sound of all students return, this would do away with any kind of violence from students whom we will not return. This legalization, honorable students may go into an eight-month rest period because of the long lines, because of so many countries that is here from Africa, El Salvador, Mexico, Spain, Italy, all the way to Ukraine. We may go into a period of violence in some states here in the 50 states because of so many people that may have to return back to their country, whether it is for fraud, felony, or being a fugitive here, whether it is for anti-tourists, or for gold mines, or for deport. Again, we're asking everyone to please be patient with our students in legalization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. And if I could ask the people in the back of the room, if you could take your conversations outside? We ask to be... Limit the conversation here in the city council. Thank you, Mr. Sergeant Arms. Madam Clerk, I think we'll open the roll. If you could state the items again that are before us, or Mr. Clerk?
1, 2, 4, and 22 through 26.
Okay. Colleagues, those items are now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 12 ayes. Those items have been approved. Thank you. Next item.
Item 45 was called special for a card from the public.
Melrose Larry Green on item number 45.
And 47.
Thank you. I want to say, this is a great meeting. And those of you that should know, that are watching at home, you're just flicking through the dial, you're watching live or on the replay, there's nothing more exciting than these city council meetings. I don't get paid. I don't work for this... I'm not a lobbyist. I don't get paid. I just love democracy. And majored in poly sci before many of you were born around here. Graduated from Brandeis in '72 in political science. I love it. I just love this. What a great meeting. What a great day. Item 45 has to do with declaring the Healthy Neighborhood Festival Kids Fun Run a special event. And you may or may not know this. Like Tom Labange, I'm an avid exercise enthusiast. I run every morning. Many of you see me running in Hollywood. I run by Hollywood and Vine. And I know that project all too well. I see it every morning. And I go by the Holly Trolley signs and all the great signs of Hollywood Boulevard. And childhood obesity is a tremendous problem in this country. So this item, I definitely support, item 45. By the way, that other group pretty used my help, I guess. I did not get paid one penny by Kenny McKenzie. And we went to the church on Olivera Street afterwards to thank... I don't know if I can say God in the city council, but to thank God yesterday. And although I am Jewish, I enjoyed the beautiful Catholic church. And again, I want to thank the city council. And apparently, if you're organized enough, you can fight City Hall and win. And we're going to be on your side to get that fire station in a good place. And I'm not kidding. You help me ever, and I help you 1,000 times back. That's the old Jewish Brandeis Five Towns way. And I love you all very, very much, and I really wanted to throw that in. And I want to say one more thing, and then I'm going to stop. I know we're running out of time, and I'm out of place by not talking on 45. There were a few comments early today questioning some of the working ability of the people around the city council. And I did a little bit of calculations. Among many other things, I passed my CPA exam. I know a little bit about hours and dividing hours by salary. I know how hard you all work. If you divide the number of hours you work by your salary, you probably make more money at McDonald's. Okay? Thank you.
Melrose Larry Green, you are on item 47. We thought of taking both of those together, so if you'd like to...
Why you got me here? Yeah. 47 is a great item. It's the watermelon festival in Sutherland to Hunger. And I must confess...
In my district.
Sorry?
In my district.
Well, until the great Antonio Viegosa ran for mayor and I joined his campaign. I didn't even know where Sutherland to Hunger really was. But I loved it, and I was there, and it's a great area. And I'm going to be there. And this was my mother's favorite food. And believe it or not, my late, great mother, Gussie Greenblatt, was born on August 13th, 1912, which would have been, I guess, her 94th birthday. So I will definitely be at the watermelon festival. I hope that our great... That you'll all be there. I love watermelon. I mean, some Jews love watermelon more than other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I welcome you to our wonderful watermelon festival. They actually crown the watermelon queen. So I hope that you will be there with us.
I will have a song for you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, we have item 45 and 47 before us. If you could open the roll on those two items, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 12 ayes. Those items have been approved. Next item, please.
Item 59 was called special for a card from the public.
Melrose Larry Green, welcome back. 59. Thank you.
This is an easy one. Declaring April 22nd Earth Day in the city of Los Angeles. And I remember, when I moved here, back in May of 1980, when my brother would not pick me up at Union Station, I came on a train from Houston. I remember the air quality in the city of L.A. in May of 1980. Alex, you were probably three, four years old then. And thanks to this great L.A. city council, you've made tremendous strides in improving the air quality and working with the state and the county organizations, and yes, the federal organizations. So Earth Day is a wonderful day. In the city of L.A., every day is basically Earth Day. And it's about time that somebody recognized the tremendous... You can actually breathe in L.A. We haven't had too many smog alerts in the last few years. Just ask Dallas Rains. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Melrose Larry Green. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 13 ayes. That item's been approved. Thank you. Would we like to go... I know we have some items in executive session, but if we'd probably go to the special meeting?
Madam President, we actually have item 64 that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Excuse me, Mr. Parks. I came in late, so I did not know that. Mr. Parks?
This is an item that we heard most of, and we lost a quorum a few days ago. And I'd just like the city attorneys to come up and explain this bond issue, because it is important to local businesspeople. And we're going to have to keep it in continuity so that people understand the whole issue. So if we can ask the city attorney staff to come up. And Ms. Grue, while we're waiting, can we have 6 and 9 forthwith?
Yes, Mr. Parks. 6 and 9 forthwith.
Let me just say, thanks very much for being here, and also apologize a little bit for the delay in your time. But if you can give the council a little overview of the bond program, and also what I'd asked, as this gets approved, if we could make copies of that material to each council office, because I'm sure most, all of their economic development deputies would want to have that as a reference, because it is an item that's universally addressed as it relates to helping small business get bonding. And so if you can give an overview of the program, I appreciate it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. My name's Victor Parker, and I'm with the City Administrative Office Risk Management. And we're actually the administrators of the Citywide Bond Assistance Program. In fiscal year 04-05 budget, the mayor and council approved a six-month funding to start this program off. It's the first time in the city's history that we've ever had a bond assistance program for small contractors. And as anyone in this field knows, one of the big impediments to small businesses in getting contracts with the city is bonding. And so we've started this program, council mayor started this program, to assist small contractors bidding on city contracts to obtain the required surety bonding, which is required by law. Just to give you a little bit of update, we've been running the program for a little bit, about a year. And we've had, at the peak, about 70 contractors already enrolled in the program. We're working with 50 currently, active at various stages. It's kind of a labor-intensive process in getting these contractors bonded. We've actually got bonding for five contractors. Those contractors have bid on 13 contracts with a total value of $5.6 million. Our Bond Assistance Program graduates have won five city contracts at the value of $3.8 million total. And a neat part of this is, because we're getting more bondable contractors in the city, bidding on city projects, we're increasing competition. And that competition has already saved the city roughly $280,000 because of increased competition on bids. So we hope that this program will almost pay for itself through the contract savings, through increasing competition, and bringing in small businesses and bidding on city projects. And we hope to grow businesses in the city of Los Angeles. Today, we're here to ask your approval on a line of credit, $4-million line of credit. And in certain cases, the contractors, they need a partial bond guarantee. And the surety companies will request that. And they'll say, can the city back this contractor? And the cities come up to the table and said, we'll back these contractors on a partial guarantee, up to $250,000 per contract. And our ceiling of our projects are about $5 million and less, because that's where the need is the most. So on the multimillion-dollar contracts, that's when we use the larger guarantee. But we would use anywhere from $10,000 on a partial guarantee, all the way up to the $250,000. So we're here today requesting your approval on the line of credit to expand this program and create more opportunities for small businesses in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. And the only question I have is, do the contractors have to be... And the only question I have is, do the contractors have to be physically... Are their businesses physically located in the city to apply for this?
You know, the stipulations are that they have to be bidding on city contracts. We do all of our outreach activities and focus all of our energies in the city of Los Angeles. We currently have the majority of the council districts represented with contractors. That's where our focus is, but we have to keep the program open to all that are bidding on city contracts.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And colleagues, this is something that the city went forward on a year or so ago, and now this is the final step in allowing the line of credit. But almost all of us have run into business people that want to bid on contracts, can't afford the bonding. And I think the key points for us is that it gives bonding up to a max of $250,000 contracts for city contracts up to $5 million, which helps small businesses grow to medium-sized and hopefully larger businesses. And there's no limitation as to the location of the business. And so appreciate that information. We'd like to make sure every council office gets that so that their economic development people can have access to that information.
We certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Yes, Mr. Chu.
You guys can make a comment?
Yes, I think we want to add an additional...
Speak in the mic.
I think we want to add an additional recommendation, addition to your recommendation, number one. Number one refers to the approval of a line of credit. We also need to add into recommendation number one, the authorization for the execution of a reimbursement agreement for the line of credit, subject to the city attorney's approval as the formal...
We still move that language. And I think, did we have last time, the language that we had to have it by the city attorney?
Yes.
As to proper legal... What's the term? Substance and...
Mumbo jumbo?
Yes. The proper language that the city attorney is going to add. So if we can add those two things, I'd appreciate it. We move this report.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Thank you. Next item, I believe... Yes, Ms. forthwith, Mr. Parks. I saw that coming. Our next item, I think, is item number two on the special agenda. Is that correct? Am I skipping again? Okay. Thank you.
Do you wish to recess the regular and go back into the special?
I'd like to recess, yes, the regular agenda and go to our special meeting. We do have two speaker cards, one from Van Nuys City Hall. And here, Mr. Padilla, would you like to hear public comment first before we begin? Okay. I'd like to, if we can. Dr. Dan Weisman, if you're still out there in Van Nuys. Beautiful Van Nuys. Are we able to connect with Mr. Weisman at Van Nuys City Hall? I'm stretching here. While we're waiting for Mr. Weisman, maybe we'll ask Jim McQuiston. Is Jim still here? Mr. McQuiston? Oh, sorry. You're up on item number two.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. This is like watching your mother-in-law drive off a cliff in your brand-new Cadillac. There is some very, very good stuff in this proposed ordinance. The only problem is that it doesn't follow the charter as far as the appointment of the commission. And you all have my statement there. We've made it very, very clear. This fine print, you might say, there is an "and." And the city attorney has prepared this as if it were an "or." And we cannot reverse the charter. I have pointed out specifically that the mayor gets to make the appointments, because that's what the charter says, and the city council has to approve them. And that's what exactly the charter says. The mayor and the city council and the procedure is listed in detail in the city council in the charter, and it says that it has to be explicitly changed if it's to be overridden. It was not explicitly changed, and therefore, we have to go by it. I think no one on this council wants to do it that way. And I have suggested an alternative to that. It could be done. It could be easily done. We've done it in the past. I do urge that because one of the things I learned in my long battles with the United States of America is you do observe the letter of the law. We are a country of laws. And in our Iraq war, we want to make sure that people say, we do observe our own laws. The charter is pretty well black and white on this issue. We just cannot appoint the charter in the manner in which the ordinance proposes. Otherwise, I think it's great.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. I'm not sure we were able to connect with Mr. Weisman out in the San Fernando Valley. He may have left. So I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Padilla, followed by Ms. Hahn. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, just want to call your attention to a technical amendment that's been circulated. I've had a chance to review the ordinance that was drafted and is before us today, reflective of what our conversation and changes were last Friday. And I believe the... Just a small technical change, very, very minor language change that the department is more comfortable with in section A of the ordinance. Several paragraphs, several sentences into it. If the neighborhood councils choose to do so, the Department of Neighborhood and Power will provide accommodations to facilitate the selection process at the Congress of neighborhoods. Again, just to make the department feel a bit more comfortable and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Members, I would like to have the city attorney just briefly opine on Mr. McQuiston's claim that we're actually violating our city charter by the way we're having the mayor and the city council appoint these commissioners.
Be happy to. Gwen Poindexter, Assistant City Attorney. We believe that the appointment process that we've set forth in the ordinance is perfectly legal. The language in the charter says the mayor and the city council make the appointments. That's exactly what the ordinance provides. The mayor will make his appointments, as we've laid out in the ordinance. Fourteen appointments, seven from the neighborhood council pool of nominations, and the seven remaining appointments are at the mayor's discretion. Those then become effective as the individual appointed authority upon receipt by the city clerk. And the city council's appointments are done through each individual council member submitting their nominations to the city clerk, which are then forwarded on to the full city council for approval. So we believe that process absolutely legally complies with the charter. We have no concerns whatsoever in that regard. Thank you.
Well, colleagues, what we have before us is the ordinance that will set up the makeup of this... We've been calling it the Nine Twelve Review Commission. As you know, the city charter, in its wisdom and forethought, realized that neighborhood councils were new. They were groundbreaking in terms of how they operate in the city of Los Angeles. We now have eighty-seven neighborhood councils. And along the way, since the voters overwhelmingly passed the city charter in nineteen ninety-nine, particularly in the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, we have spent the last years tweaking, amending, cutting red tape, whether it be for elections, whether it be for grievance procedures in the neighborhood councils, whether it was the very severe Form 700 form that many neighborhood councils felt was oppressive and overburdened them for them to fill out as volunteers at the end of the day for their neighborhood. So we've spent time sort of reacting to things that weren't working well in the neighborhood councils over the last few years. But this is a great opportunity for a commission to really review neighborhood councils from the top to the bottom and decide what's worked, what hasn't worked, what we can do in the future to ensure that they are accountable, that they are efficient, and that they're really empowered to weigh in on the decisions that we make here on the city council and weigh in on, you know, issues that impact their neighborhood. This makeup of this commission, I believe, ensures, first of all, the voice for the neighborhood councils. This ensures that they get seven members on this committee by choosing them by the area planning commission areas. It also ensures that we have a stake in this. Each of us, as council members, can appoint someone to this commission. And I felt that was very important, because this really is, can be a very weighty commission, and we needed to have a stake in this and appoint our people as well on this commission. And it will ensure that the mayor also has representative on this commission. I encourage all of us to take this very seriously. I encourage all of us to appoint the kind of person that we believe will really look at this from not necessarily one point of view. We're going to now have twenty-nine members on this commission. And we need to have, you know, a lot of people that look at this from different points of views, from renters, from people that maybe have been left out of the process so far, as well as people who have been in the trenches in neighborhood councils since the beginning. So I look forward to having what we had in nineteen ninety-seven, was the great civic debate on how our government works, how we include people in our process, and how this groundbreaking network of neighborhood councils has been working and how they can work in the future. So I urge your eye vote on this ordinance today that will make up this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Padilla.
I just rise and want to echo some of the thoughts and concerns I raised already, just for the record. But we do know that it is rather... I'll put it a positive spin. We can create a balance if we understand demographic makeup of our city and who's actually living in our city and how they participate. I think the real challenge, and I was given this observation, is how do we get more people involved when they are carrying two jobs, when they are worried about childcare, when they don't have the so-called leisure time to get involved with these very sometimes challenging and long meetings? How do they carve out that time for that? And I really believe we have to put ourselves in a place we can be creative with our technology, using our ability to communicate from our homes. We have to reach a level of dialogue where we actually are hearing the many voices that make up this great city. So just want to thank my colleagues again, Councilman Padilla and his effort, Councilman Hahn for her advocacy, and hopefully, we are in a place where we have a balanced approach and do here from every sector and interest group of the city. So thank you for your hard work.
Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Padilla.
Yeah, I just rise again to congratulate my colleagues for what they've done and with the city staff here. Fifteen, seven, and seven. Those are the numbers. Fifteen means each of us will have an opportunity to bring somebody with leadership to this commission. The mayor has his seven, and then the other seven hopefully will come from a composite of neighborhood council support within the process of the planning commission. Do you have a sense of the timetable of this, how it will go, and how long, and so on?
Yes. Once the ordinance is actually adopted, the nominations can actually go forward, even though the effective date of the ordinance is really not until after the publication date. But we have written into the ordinance that the appointments need to be made by June twenty-third. So I think we actually do have adequate time to have those appointments effective by the deadline.
Then July one happens, and then what timeframe do you see, envision going forward?
Well, that will be up to the commission. The members will decide how often they want to meet, where, the venues, et cetera. There may be some need in the very beginning for city staff to facilitate that first meeting. But once the commission is up and running, they can make those decisions themselves as to the frequency and the need for how often they need to meet.
And they have a broad charter, right? They can look at every aspect of what we put in place in nineteen ninety-nine.
That's correct. And your city council directed this, our office, to put some broad categories that they wanted the commissioners to consider. So there's a laundry list, so to speak, but those that are mandated also by the charters, which is fairly broad language.
So then when this commission finishes its deliberations with its recommendations, then what happens?
Then the city council will again engage in public hearings and discussion and debate about the various recommendations that have come forward. You can accept them, make changes to them. The whole issue of the system of neighborhood councils will be again before this body to determine whether there are any need for charter changes or ordinance or plan changes.
And so you see this commission going to the neighborhoods, going throughout the fifteen districts, having town halls, bringing everybody in, getting real citizen input?
Exactly. In fact, the ordinance provides that the commission should, if where feasible, meet in those community areas and at least in each of the area planning commission areas. And to have weekend meetings and evening meetings to facilitate that input wherever feasible.
Then in their first couple of three meetings, they'll come up with their agenda of what issues they consider important. We can also use our impact on our reps, and the mayor will do that as well.
I would presume so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Great. Good to see so many people excited. I just wanted to underscore something that both Mr. Reyes and Ms. Hahn touched upon. Has been a lengthy process getting to this point, not only going back to two thousand and one with the establishment of the apartment, the commission, the hiring of the initial staff. We're now in the dozens upon dozens of neighborhood councils throughout the city, and the charter has wisely called for a timeout and a review. And we had a healthy dialogue that led to this final configuration, up until now, the configuration of this commission. And who was going to appoint and how many commissions were going to be appointed was a large topic of conversation. But Ms. Hahn hit it right on the head. Now it's up to us to make quality appointments, to make timely appointments over the next several weeks to allow this commission to get up and running on a timely basis. And to answer Mr. Rosendahl's question a little bit more specifically on the timeline, we're giving it a twelve-month life. And the first report is due in the first six months to give them the sense of urgency, to make sure they give us a progress report early on in the process, but certainly up to twelve months to produce any final report or recommendations for this council to consider. And again, we ask for your eye vote.
If I could just make one small comment. Just want to make one very minor change that was based on a Real Thirty-eight comment we received from ITA. We want to make a language change, which is basically in the meeting requirements and the filming of the meetings. That would be section four D. And the recommended language we would suggest is that the commission meetings shall be filmed and broadcast on City Channel thirty-five whenever feasible. The original language gave an option of either thirty-five or thirty-six. ITA's comment, and they're present here, if you'd like to hear more from them in this regard, is simply their position is that the channel thirty-five is really the government channel, and they feel that that would be the more appropriate venue for the filming. So we provided an amendment already that would simply delete the reference to channel thirty-six. And we made a language change to make it clear that the commission meetings shall be filmed, which would then be filmed by and broadcast by ITA.
Any other questions, Mr. Padilla? Okay. If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Yes, just you wanted to go forthwith?
Two quick things on this item. First of all, I request that it be sent forthwith, since it is unanimous. And then second, just to acknowledge Laura McKenna in my office, who put a lot of hours and a lot of work into this. So just want to thank her.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, for recognizing your staff as well. That item will go forthwith. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, do you wish to adjourn the special meeting?
We will adjourn the special meeting.
And go back into the regular meeting?
The regular meeting. I believe all we have left are those items that are closed session.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to make the announcement?
These closed session matters are pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six, C... Or point nine, C. Or actually, A. 9C, or actually A.
Lewis Lopez versus the City of LA.
Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 61, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $358,000 in the case of Lynette Smith versus City of LA.
Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 63, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $125,000 in the workers' comp case of Donald Castillo versus City of LA.
Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, May 19th for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Padilla moves, and Mr. Parks seconds.
Councilmember Garsetti requests to be excused Friday, April 28th, to leave at 12:15 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds.
And Councilmember Gruehl requests to be excused Tuesday, May 2nd, to leave at 11:00 AM for city business. A motion is required.
Yes, Mr. Parks moved, Mr. Weisar seconds.
That clears the desk. Madam President?
Thank you. Members, are there any items, announcements today? Any announcements? Announcements, okay. Members, are there any adjourn, oh, Mr. Labonge, an announcement?
No, I mean adjourn.
Okay. Item, before we do that, item three and item number sixteen to go forthwith. Announcement, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have two announcements, and this is for our general contracting community, primarily in our districts. The county is building a 200,000-square-foot building, over $100 million investment at 83rd and Vermont. And they're going to have a vendors' conference for subcontracting opportunities, and it will be held on May 4th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at the Constituent Center at 8475 South Vermont, which is just north of, just south of, I guess, north of Manchester. But it's just something for people that are interested in securing contracts and subcontractors in the business trades. And then also, the city just put out a notice for all contractors interested in bidding on May 9th for the, and this will be held at City Hall, at 200 South Spring, for the contracting network session for the new police facility that's going to be built on First Street. And they have to be no later than May 8th at noon that the RFPs have to be in. But that conference will be Tuesday, May 9th, from 9:00 to 11:30.
Thank you. Any more announcements, colleagues? If not, if I could ask everyone to rise for adjourning motions. I think Mr. Labonge, you're first.
Thank you very much. Members, a very sad passing of a Chris Smith, who was a Silverlake resident. He passed away on Thursday, April 20th in San Diego, complications due to stomach cancer. Chris was a native of Seattle and a graduate of Nathan Hale High School. Mr. Smith has been working in Los Angeles as a screenwriter, who volunteered to teach screenwriting classes at Bethel AME Church in Los Angeles over ten years ago. He met one of his first students, a young security guard named Antoine Fisher, who was a survivor of a troubled childhood. Mr. Smith was instrumental in helping Fisher tell his story on the big screen. Mr. Smith introduced Fisher to the right people and worked on the screenplay with him, and ultimately served as co-producer of the 2002 film that many of us know as Antoine Fisher. Mr. Smith recently finished a doctorate at UCLA at education, just began his new business when he was visiting a friend in an afternoon and said, "Why is your stomach bloated?" Getting diagnosed, he found he had cancer just a few short months ago. He, his business, obviously, his family, everyone is at a loss. His wife Janet, who is friends of the neighborhood support group for Friends of Ivanhoe, the parents-run support group for Ivanhoe Elementary School, his wife Janet, his children Gleason, Isaac, and Stella, his mother Pat Smith and siblings Sally Matheson, Tim Smith, and Shannon Smith are his survivors. Every day's a blessing. This man in our community was a screenwriter, involved in his community, and tragically got diagnosed with breast cancer and in a short time was called. I stand to ask that we adjourn in his memory on this date for Chris Smith. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Evangelina Norton, who was a resident of Arlita, who lived alone, had moved here from San Diego. But she had many friends. Originally born in Navajoa, Sonora, Mexico, she passed away in a tragic automobile accident just about a week and a half ago. She was a lifelong activist who fought for the rights of the poor, having volunteered countless hours helping friends and neighbors fill out tax forms and other official documents for the immigrant community. Those who knew her knew that she was always active and full of energy, always maintaining a positive attitude and a smile on her face regardless of what was going on in the community and what was going on in the world. She genuinely cared about others, always reached out. She survived by her sisters, two sisters, three brothers, thirteen nieces and nephews, and 25 grand nieces and nephews. And colleagues, this is a particularly tough loss. She was a truly dedicated volunteer on the campaign that I know you're all very well aware of. One of the volunteers that you kind of have to make them go home at the end of the day because they want to keep working, 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 and believed in what we're campaigning for. And the accident was literally as she was leaving the campaign office about a week and a half ago. So she's already missed.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Keith Alexander Ward. Mr. Ward was only 56 years of age, passed away on Monday, April 17th, due to a heart attack. He was a valued city employee in our community development department. He worked as a management assistant in the Human Services and Family Development Division. He lived just outside the 8th Council District on West Lawson Boulevard. He was born in West Virginia in 1949, raised in New York, obtained a law degree from the University of Albany. He also attended the University of Atlanta. His city career spanned ten years, all of which were in CDD. He worked for Business Week, DeVry College, ITT College, Equitable Insurance. He pursued a musical career from the age of 14. He was a drummer with the Moss Brothers Band and played with great, such greats as Freddie Hubbard and George Benson. The family, and certainly, we have several members of CDD here today are deeply saddened by his passing. Keith, his services were held at Angeles-Rosedale Cemetery on Friday, April 28th at 11:00 AM. He survived by his mother and sister, both who live and reside in Chicago, also survived by his 17-year-old daughter and his cousin here in Los Angeles. Madam Chair, I'd ask indulgence and ask, one of the members of the department would like to make some comments.
Delphia Jones, Director of Human Services and Family Development, Community Development Department. Keith was a very beloved member of our staff. We have many fond memories of him, particularly the fact that he cared about everyone. And when we were very busy working, if we didn't have time to go to lunch, he would always go out and pick up lunch for everyone. He was a gentleman who was constantly in pain because of injuries that he suffered, but he always had a great attitude and a smile for everyone. He took care of the contractors, making sure that their insurance was current, called them up, and protected the city. We love Keith for his love and support of his daughter, who was only seventeen years old and actually suffers from autism. We are taking up a collection in the department to provide funding for her. And I do have his cousin, James Ward, who has a few fond memories as well.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everybody for all their kindness, kind words, courtesy. Keith was very special to us, as well as to everyone else. And, you know, I really appreciate, you know, the people that he worked with coming here to the council to make it be known. So I think this was something that he would really love and appreciate. That's why I thank you.
Thank you. And I'd ask all members to join in adjourning in his memory today. Thank you all for being here. Any other adjourning motions? Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, sorry. Please call it all. Thank you. Council is adjourned.